We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on November 1st, 2022 to order at 3:03 PM. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary's staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation, and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach, the podium due to physical limitations of microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone who would like -- present who would like to speak on a work session item? Seeing no one is registered to speak, we will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from our city manager.
Good afternoon, council members and mayor. Looking forward to providing a brief report to you this afternoon. I'm going to start with a couple of staff highlights. The first one, employee recognition item, I'd like to recognize interim CBB director, Dan Quant. Dan, do you mind standing up there? Yep, there you go. Dan represented us very well last weekend, I believe. Is that right, Dan, last weekend? At Cota, at Circuit of the Americas. What's that? Yep, okay. We were one of the fortunate cities to have a spot, a free booth, actually, at Cota. That's during their Formula One race. As you may have heard, there was about 450,000 guests from around the world that traveled to Austin, and our booth, as you note there, Dan, in the picture, was consistently busy. You might have seen the pictures from like the celebrity magazines and things. I can't confirm that Brad Pitt made his way past our booth. But Dan can tell us later. We were, though, very pleased that Dan and actually his wife spent a couple days serving nine to 10 hours a day handing out Waco koozies, as well as exposing international and national visitors to the Waco CBB and Waco rowing brands. So just wanted to say thanks, Dan, for all that.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, Dan.
Our second employee recognition item, I wanted to highlight the work of the fire department. They hosted another addition of their Citizen Academy, and very popular program, and it really has, I think, a profound impact on our community and helps create perspective on what it takes to be a Waco firefighter. Instead of me talking about it, though, I wanted to show you a quick video that the communications team put together.
I applied for the Fire Academy just because I wanted to take a look and see how everything operated with Waco Fire Department, and I figured it would be a good learning opportunity for me, especially as a college student, to figure out what Waco Fire Department does. Something that was the most interesting for me was doing the burn chamber, and that was awesome just because we got to go in and see what it was like whenever we have a flashover on a fire, and we got to actually be in a fire with the firefighters in the gear, with everything, with the air tanks, and just be in a fire. And that was something that was awesome because it was a controlled safe fire that we also got to learn in, so it was amazing.
We were sitting down and saw the flashover, saw the flames go over our heads. I looked up and was almost mesmerized by it. You know, I liken it to Aurora Borealis, kind of like that, like an orange version of it, but it was really cool. Glad I didn't stand up.
I actually applied because she told me about applying and said, hey, you want to go, and so I came.
I had a great respect for their job, just learning everything. Just putting the gear on alone is a lot, like, it's heavy. It's like 45 pounds, I think.
Right. You put on all that gear, and I could barely just stand in it.
When you look at what they're doing, when they're moving and dragging people out and all this gear and having to do it in a matter of seconds versus we were sitting down and we were feeling heat and, you know, we felt stress in our body, I can only imagine what they go through after physically pulling and lifting people. Even if you have no interest in fire service at all, absolutely do it, because there's information that you don't think about it naturally, but when they explain it to you, you're like, well, it is that simple. You know, if grease fire breaks out, just put the lid on.
So I'd recommend people apply for it just because it's a great learning opportunity, one, but also you get to experience just the life of a firefighter without having to be at station, and then also, for me, it helps me figure out what I want to do as a career as a younger person. So it helps a lot of people my age be like, hey, do I want to do this as a career? What do I want to do? And so it's a really great, you know, just education and career factor.
Thank you to our firefighters and our city staff and Fire Department for putting that really cool learning opportunity on and engage our citizens in that way. It's really cool to see, particularly for me, to see people's career trajectories potentially be changed through the learning that could come from that.
Yeah, I had a moment one time, and me and your city attorney went through a day-long session one time, and we got to together try and pull a body out of a smoke-filled building thanks to the Fire Department, and I don't think it--
You don't want to be smoke-filled, but like with you and I to pull out a body?
No, 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 no. You need somebody else.
That rolling.
Yeah, really.
Just kidding.
Don't have a video, but it really gave perspective on what it takes to ride on a Waco fire truck. And so thanks, Fire Team, for continuing to invest in education for our community members. And thanks, Comms. I think that's a video piece that we can use in a lot of different ways. It's very high quality, so thanks to both teams. We do have one public hearing on the agenda later this evening. As a curveball, actually, Beatrice Wharton from the Planning Department will be reviewing this with us instead of Clint Peters, and she'll review that in the work session, time permitting, later on this afternoon. We have a total of 20 resolutions and five ordinances. I'm not planning to highlight any of the resolutions during my report, so I'll take any questions that you have about those at this time.
Holmes here. Just a lot of good resolutions there. I mean, we're looking at a lot of different things and great. I just wanted to point out the last two, and they're both kind of attaboy in nature, but the number 17, 843, is just having a program ready, or a project ready, I should say, for the Federal Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. I think it's important that, as these federal dollars come back in relative to the infrastructure bill and the funds that are coming in, that we have these programs ready to go, shovel-ready, as they used to call them, or just ready for launch. And the Primrose Creek Bridge definitely fits the bill there. Anytime we can take advantage of that, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act by IJA, the better. So I appreciate you guys having that ready to go. Number 18 is 844. Again, I do this every time I see this. I give you guys a pat on the back because this is a Caterpillar compactor that was to replace the compactor would have cost $1.3 million, and you guys figured out a way to fund a 2005 sort of a version of it that's been certified, I guess, by Caterpillar for 486. So you saved the city almost a million dollars on that one transaction or one unit. So a million dollars, I think, on a per resident, I think that's enough for one gut pack for every resident of the city of Waco, so we go treat yourselves. Anyway, so good job on both those deals. I think it's, it shows that you're paying attention and you're watching the bottom dollar, and I appreciate staff's attention to the tail.
All right. The consent agenda will include Resolution 2022, 827 through 845. Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right. The consent agenda will include Resolution 2022, 827 through 845. And the next item on the agenda are the work session items, 2022, 820 through 823. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
Sure. Our first work session, I'm going to ask the team from MGT to come on up. It's going to be an update and discussion of the disparity study. As the council will likely remember, late in 2021, you selected MGT to provide an availability and disparity study for the city of Waco after a request for qualifications process, and we're really pleased to have team members from MGT. Y'all can actually have a seat at the table if you like. Yeah, yeah, we've set that up for you, and there's water if you like, and Mario, if you'd like to join them, please feel free. I'm pleased to have this group here this afternoon. This is a very important project that's been ongoing. Today's presentation's going to be really helpful, I think, for the council and public to hear just what is the disparity study and how far along we are in the work here in Waco. This work is such a critical element to identifying opportunities to better work with our minority and women and/or women-owned business enterprises in this region, and it really sits at the kind of the intersection of two of your strategic goals as a city council, and that's facilitating economic development as well as creating a culture of equity. So I'm going to turn the mic over to Andres Bernal, as well as Bernada Mitchell today from MGT, and if you'll introduce Mario down the road as well, take it away.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Ford, and hopefully everybody can hear us fine. Thank you for having us here today. We are here to give you an update of where the disparity study is, a little bit about ourselves, where we're going, and where we are. So just a quick little agenda of what we're going to talk about this afternoon. We're just going to go through our team introduction, go through the methodology and approach of the disparity study, our current study updates, and answer any questions that the council may have for us. So just a, kind of just a quick overview of who MGT Consulting is. MGT Consulting is a public sector consulting firm founded 48 years ago in the city of Tallahassee, the capital of Florida. Since then, we've done over 13,000 client partnerships across the globe. Everything, all the work we do is in the public sector, anywhere from state and local governments to higher education, school boards, and anything in between. Specifically for disparity studies and equity-related projects, we've done over 230-plus engagements to date. We've done in 10 of the 11 circuits. Bernada, do you know which circuit we haven't hit?
Okay.
I think the 10th, kind of convenient there. But so 10 out of the 11 circuits, we have been, we've done disparity study works. So a little bit about who the project leaders are on this project. You have myself, Andres Bernal. I am the executive in charge of our disparity study practice area in MGT. I handle all of the methodological and quantitative research and any of the legal research that we have.
And my name is Bernada Mitchell. I'm a director with MGT, and I lead the qualitative data research, as well as assist our subconsultants in their work as they move forward with the study. I also like to introduce our team just very quickly, Ms. Corlisha Mitchell, Juan Osuna, Haida Torre, and Dr. Fred Seaman, all contributing either in qualitative, quantitative, policy analysis, or recommendations. So that's the team. We're also very happy to have three very, very highly qualified subconsultants working with us. Today with us is Mario Trevino, who assisted us with innovative strategies, assisted us with the focus groups that we held earlier today. We have Dr. Edward Brinkon, who is going to assist with the availability and the vendor survey. And then we have a legal contributor, Marcos Ronquillo, who is also going to assist us with the legal research, legal framework.
A little bit of a quick overlay of what a disparity study is and then our specific approach. Just in essence, I think Mr. Ford kind of mentioned a little bit about it. The disparity study at its core is an economic equity study. The whole purpose of this study is, there's two points. It's being legally defensible and also being actionable. The reason the legal defensibility comes into play is because of a Supreme Court case back in 1989, Richmond versus Croson, that basically dictated that if any public sector entity wants to have a supplier diversity program that tries to impact based on race, gender, and ethnicity goals, there has to be a localized discrimination in the marketplace that dictates the need for those remedies. So what a disparity study does, it provides that evidence that a city municipality entity can then use to provide actionable results that are narrowly tailored to enhance or create any supplier diversity program. So with that background, this is kind of just where we have been and where we are going. This is just a flow chart of everything that a disparity study does. I'm not going to belabor a lot of this, but we have about three different phases that we do. We have the procurement program policy review, where we look at a municipality or entity's program, how they're functioning, what barriers there might be to doing business with that entity. We mentioned we do a legal review that's in this circuit, is specific to the Fifth Circuit and any other cases that come out of the federal circuits that are particular to disparity studies and economic equity. Then the vast majority of the time where we have spent right now is doing the data collection, data assessment, because that is key to the disparity study. What we're really trying to look at is, is there discrimination in the marketplace, like I mentioned before, that raises to the level that we need to have any supplier diversity remedy? How we do that is by looking at all of the data from different angles. We have our public sector data that we look at. That's what we've been spending extensive time with Ms. Deirdre's team. We've been doing, we'll be doing our private sector analysis, and what we're actually here this week doing is our qualitative focus group, which is just one part of the puzzle to get us there. After that, we will be able to provide the city with what we call disparity results on all of those to really show where there are issues in the marketplace. From there, the final part is providing any recommendations, helping the city set any aspirational goals for their supplier diversity initiatives, and then, of course, preparing and presenting the final report. So with that said, where we are right now, overall project, we have done the procurement and policy review. We've interviewed, we've already completed our staff interview. That's just basically understanding a baseline of where the city's program and policies when it comes to procurement are. We've already, our draft chapter is in writing stage, and we'll be able to deliver that for review shortly. The same thing with our legal chapter. We are in the writing stage, and one of the things that we always want to be very cognizant of in any of these projects is that even though we provide a legal analysis, it's not legal advice per se to our clients on any of these subjects. The other aspects, we've already collected all of the prime contractor data. That is the data where you are actually, the city is doing work with your prime contractors. The other piece of the puzzle that we will be collecting in the next month or two is our subcontractor data collection, and that's what rounds out, because a lot of the times, these prime contractors, they are hiring subcontractors to do work for the city. So that's a very important piece of the puzzle. That's going to begin in the next couple of weeks and end by, hopefully, the end of the year. To Bernada, who will take us through the anecdotal update.
Absolutely. We spoke about qualitative data research being just as important as the quantitative, so we have multiple methods of data collection that we're going through. We held a business engagement meeting that was open to all businesses in the marketplace in June, excuse me. Today and tomorrow, we are holding focus groups, again, open to all businesses that are interested in providing their insight, their input, their experiences, not only doing business with the city of Waco, but in the Waco marketplace as well. And then we are going to have a series of in-depth interviews or one-on-one interviews with local businesses. We also are going to have some interviews one-on-one, or actually, we had a focus group today, one-on-one with a lot of your trade association, professional organizations, business organizations that support the businesses in Waco. A survey of vendors will also be conducted, asking a lot of qualitative information, not only about their experience doing business, but their bonding capacity, ability to receive lending for their business and those types of, that type of data. And then we also have, we've launched a disparity study website that is very specific to the city of Waco. It has a project overview. It also has information about the focus groups and other anecdotal activities that firms can participate in. And most importantly, one of the things that we'd like to add to that website is businesses can also go to that website and provide to us their anecdotes about what has happened with their business and their ability to do business with the city and in the marketplace. And that information comes directly back to us, and so we take that information and either we follow up to get more details about that, and sometimes that information is just very robust, and we can take it and use it as part of the analysis.
Thank you, Bernada.
And so the communication and outreach is really important. We've done quite a few things in collaboration with the city. The city has been phenomenal in helping us try to reach the business community. So we have very targeted outreach, emails to Waco businesses, the vendors, the certified firms, those that may not have done business with you yet but are in your market that sell the types of goods and services that you procure, and we've invited them to not only participate in the business engagement meeting that we talked about, but also the focus groups as well. We've also sent emails and direct conversations with the professional organizations, again, inviting them to the business engagement meeting and the focus groups. And then the city has been very helpful in the community-wide outreach in terms of press releases distributed by the city. The notices of the different business engagement meetings and focus groups were distributed citywide, and also assisting us in reviewing the content of the website and launching that and notifying the community that that website is available to all of the businesses who not only want to learn more about the study, but most importantly, want to provide their comments and their feedback about their experiences in the marketplace.
Thank you, Bernada. Just a little bit last of where we are. This is the current timeline of the work that we are doing by all of the tasks. I'm not going to go through all of the aspects, but one of the things that we do really want to note is just how long our data assessment, and that's why it's so important and crucial to it. That's Task 4. Our hope is that by the end of the year, we will have all of that data collected, and as you can see, it basically just dominoes from there. The other aspect of it, and just as equally as important, is Task 10, which is all of the qualitative anecdotal data collection, and you can see that it's just as, takes just as long as that, any of the other tasks to do. We have here January through May, but in reality, we've already done that. We're probably closer November, but it really, you know, getting those anecdotes from the community is so important that we want to give as much time as possible for it. So we start in November, and it literally will go through the end, sometimes even till the time that we're finishing up the report, we may have some of those anecdotes there. From there, we anticipate that about April or May is when we'll be starting to just put all of the chapters together. The team, the city team members that we are working with, will see a lot of the chapters results before this, but towards April, May is when we'll have the entire report put together. So Task 11, 12, 13, which are your best practices, your aspirational goals, and then your final report, will be delivered towards the, towards the middle to end of May. Now, with that said, that's a little bit of the update of where we are. We want to open it up to the council to answer any questions that they may have.
Any questions?
Holmes here. Just, I like how your, the approach is great. Yep, the, I want to go back and say that the Gantt chart was excellent, too. I like seeing that progress. I got to mention that. But anyway, awarding contracts to hubs and historically underutilized businesses and minority and women-owned businesses is an important part of what we're trying to do. There's a lot of growth right now, and a lot of construction projects, and we want to see local builders and local contractors, everybody, share in this phenomenon that's going on in Waco right now, and I think targeting this and trying to figure out where that disparity is and somehow correcting that or creating that opportunity, I think, is very important. So it's very timely. I like your ambitious timeline here, too. And just anecdotally, I don't know if some of those, and I'm sure this will come out in the study, whether, and in some cases, being a contractor involves like the bonding process is difficult, the application process sometimes gets a little confusing, and just access to capital. I know there's a lot of barriers, and I know that you guys are going to flesh all this out, but I also want part of the analysis to be, not only are we selecting the right group, because I can remember when I first got on council, there was, I forget what it was, I think it was part of the TIF grant process. I think there were 14, something on this order, 14 TIF grants awarded, only one was a historically underutilized business. And so people would say, well, our selection process is bad or flawed, our award process. Well, it turned out there was only one application that was an HEV. So to me, that shifts the light and the focus not to the selection process, but to the community that is trying to get involved in this, in this process. So, and that may be, that may be a tougher job, you know, but I think, you know, we're up to it, too, as far as helping these businesses get involved in all the good things that are going on in Waco right now. So I'm looking forward to what your study shows, because you've got a great team put together here, and whatever you need from me to support you going through this, you got it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Hello from San Marcos. Thank you for updating us on this information. I think that one of the things that, and I appreciate staff collaborating with you to get the information out and the information on the website, the thing that I think kind of resonated with me is that if we're going to address disparity, you have to have localized evidence, and so that's actual data from the businesses that exist in our community. And I just want to, you know, just reiterate and encourage to the business owners who, you know, are watching or, you know, actively engaged in council, please, you know, talk to, you know, this group, you know, participate in these activities, because in order for us as a city to be responsive to the need, that has been told to us, you know, about where the gaps are, where the holes are, you know, this is the data that we have to have so we can flat-footed stand in the gap for our citizens, for our businesses that are historically underutilized. So all that to say, the question is, so suppose I am a business and I haven't heard, or I didn't get a flyer, or I didn't see a social, you know, who do I call? And if I have heard, but I'm unsure and have questions, where do I go?
Excellent question. And so the disparity study website is specifically for the city of Waco's disparity study, and it's citiofwaco-texas-disparitystudy.com, and it's also in our presentation. But if you just Google "city of Waco disparity study," it should pop up to the top as well. So firms can do several things. They could either go to that website and fill out the comment or contact us form. Those come directly back to me, so when I check those, I will either call them back or I'll arrange them for Mario to talk with them and do an interview. Firms can participate in the survey, so we're going to have, the outreach and engagement that we presented today is just the start, but there will be additional outreach engagement throughout the life of the study, because we will have qualitative research, you know, throughout the life of the study. So we still have interviews, we still have surveys, so there'll be a lot more communication going out to the community as well. And, you know, I think we established a really good relationship with many of the professional organizations this morning, and so we're going to be looking to them to help us get that word out as well.
Very good. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you so much for your work. Thank you to our city staff for their diligence in getting us to this point. Our council and city staff and the residents of our community are very committed to Waco being a equitable city and a city where all businesses have opportunity. I have no doubt that as a result of this work, we're going to get better services here in the city, that there's going to be financial security brought into businesses and families in our community. So this level of strategy and really being thoughtful about how we approach our work is really important. So we appreciate this and look forward to the finished product. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
Thank you. Counsel, our next work session presentation will be a discussion of staff recommendations for-- for the 2023 Texas Department of Transportation Call for Bike and Pedestrian Projects. I'm going to invite Amy Bilarly-Hyland up, and it looks like she's bringing Jim Reed as well. Jim, welcome to the party. Amy, of course, is our Director of Public Works, and Jim serves, ooh, I think it's Streets Program Manager.
Division Manager.
What's that?
Streets Division Manager.
Division Manager. I was so close. But over the summer, TechDOT released a, a call for projects, and since that time, Amy's team has been evaluating the, the call for projects as well as our existing Active Transportation Plan, or ATP, and bringing forth recommendation today. And I'm excited for her to do that. And it's really, Councilmember Holmes, this is another example of staff keeping its ear to the ground on accessing non-local dollars for local infrastructure needs. So I'm very encouraged by the work here and look forward to Amy's presentation.
Thank you, City Manager. Good afternoon, City Council and Mayor. Jim and I are very pleased to be here tonight to talk to you about TechDOT's Retool Transportation Alternatives Program and what they've changed and the process that we went through to determine which projects we would recommend applying for grants for and other projects that we've identified that would, we would be able to incorporate and take care of in-house. So I'm going to hand it over to Jim because he is by far the expert on this process.
Thank you, Amy. So I, I too am excited to be here today. You know, the program itself, I've been around it for 30 years of my career, and I think it's very important to the communities in central Texas that we compete for the money. I mean, it's out there, so we're going to talk a little bit about the program itself, how we come up with the recommendations, and what we think we can do before the end of 2023. So as Amy said, the, the program is changing quite a bit. As you see this slide here, community-based projects is what we've always had. You've heard it termed Safe Routes to School, Enhancement Project, Safety Lou, and Transportation Set Aside. TechDOT's retooling the program a lot, and, and there's many reasons for that, but I think the biggest thing is the contribution that the federal government is bringing to the table to support alternative transportation in the communities around Texas. Community-based projects, when you look at the City of Waco, we've received about 12 projects for those Safe Routes to School over the years, which equates to about $22 million that has come directly into the City of Waco over the years that the program's been around. What they're doing a little bit different is that in the past, community-based projects were population 200,000 and below. Well, they're trying to reach out to the entire state of Texas, so they're going to open it up to all communities. So Dallas, Houston, Austin, the bigger communities, did not compete with the City of Waco for funding in the past. So what they decided to do is, yes, they're going to be part of this funding call, but they'll compete under a large-scale Active Transportation Infrastructure part of the program. So what you see in blue is what we've always competed in. The new programs are Large-Scale Active Transportation Infrastructure. Those projects are looking at projects that'll be 5 million to 20 million total. So they're really big projects when you talk about finances. When you talk about community-based projects and what the funding is for that, that's usually been about 500,000 to about 2 million. They've increased that $2 million factor to about 5 million. So there's going to be a lot of heavy projects, but then they also have a new program called Active Transportation Network Enhancements. Where we think that fits in our community, and we'll kind of show that later on in the presentation, is that when you talk about ADA, Americans with Disability Acts, how that reaches all, all ages, all conditions, all situations, we think that Waco's got some catching up to do in that category. So we're going to show you how we think a project, especially in the downtown area, will be beneficial that we compete in that category. And then the last category that they've offered is a planning-type opportunity. So used to with Safe Routes to School, they had a chance that you could take an, an individual elementary school or middle school and you could do a study around that school of what pedestrian improvements you could do. We're, we're not planning on competing under this current call, but we think in the future we'll learn from whatever TechDOT throws out as awarded projects, and we can know better how we can go and compete for those funding. So I was notified in May that potentially TechDOT was going to have a call for projects. Nobody really knew the scope, set, scale, what kind of money we'd be dealing with. So I was excited about it, but the first step is trying to put together preliminary applications. Preliminary applications are about a five-page document that we submit to TechDOT Waco District, and they evaluate if the project can actually compete in the category that we've selected. So that'll be our first step. Second step is deciding which of these categories we feel like our projects fit into. So again, the usual one has been community-based, but we'd really like to go community-based. We'd like to compete in large scale, and then we'd like to at least compete in the Network Enhancements category. So what TechDOT gave us is an original timeline that gave, when they presented this, was in September. As you can see, the grant, get the word out, call for project opens in October. We're a little bit behind that. When I talk to people down in Austin, they think the program call's going to start sometime December 1st. So during the holidays, you'll see Public Works staff, if you tell us to move forward, will be working on preliminary applications. That's usually about a 60-day process. Once we get notified that our preliminary applications are accepted, then we'll be moving on to final detailed applications. Usually that's about 220 pages of very detailed information, of maps and budgets and scopes and photographs of why our need is the most important in the state of Texas. So we try to put that together. And then where it says the commission award, we, we expect that before the end of 2023. That's, that's more realistic with the delay that they've experienced. What's different about this call is it's open to all areas of the state, as I discussed before. But I think the biggest thing is there's about $250 million that's being awarded under this program call. Last program call in 2001, which we received in the spring, there was only about 50 million that was distributed during that call. And the previous call was about 72 million, and that was back in 2019, and we received three awards during that call. So it's, it's a lot of money, and we just definitely are going to try to turn it around quick and meet TechDOT's expectations and make sure we have the most competitive projects that we can. And again, it'll have large projects, it'll have quick turnaround improvement projects, it'll have non-infrastructure award projects. So the first thing we did when we got notified that potentially there was a call was sit around the table in Public Works and figure out how we can compete what best. And no question, we have a lot of projects across the city that we've started engineering services or planning services, or at least budget exercises on that we feel like fit in the alternative transportation mode. Alternative transportation, you're talking about biking and walking. So it's very important that we try to capture some of the work that we've already done because we know that's one of the scoring, scoring criteria that TechDOT uses is, I think, Councilmember Holmes said the word earlier, shovel-ready. That's very important. They use that as a term that they decide, do you get an award or not? They don't want a project that is not ready to go when you promise it'll be delivered. So having it shovel-ready, it gets us further down the road. So from our internal discussions, we identified about eight projects that we felt like we had started some design services on internal, but we thought really we need to reach out to the biking community and the walking community. So we used the MPOs, the Metropolitan, Metropolitan Planning Organizations Bike and Ped Committee as a catalyst for that. So we brought this acknowledgement that TechDOT was going to move forward with a call to that group, gave them a, a list of projects that are recommended in the Active Transportation Plan, and asked them to score that, that list. From that, we also had the MPO do electronic distribution because there's about 35 members. We usually have probably about 15 members that show up for any given committee meeting. So we're just trying to reach the most. And we got a response from the, from the committee that, of what projects they'd like to see move forward. And ironically, they matched a lot of what we had internal with our work group of, of the projects we were trying to move forward. We thought, well, we need to really take it a step further if we're really going to compete for the money. So we went out and got a consultant to do a technical analysis, study and report of all the projects that we had identified. That project list is about 14 projects long. As you can see on the slide here, we, we had a scoring sheet that we had them do where it shows red of what needs to be improved, it shows purple of what we might be able to leave, and then you can see, what we're trying to do with all the projects is look at more a complete street-type approach. From that group, from BGE, which was a local engineering team, they've lived in the area, so they're kind of familiar with a lot of the work that's going on, where we've been, where we're going. We asked them to, to dig down into one major category is where is the demand? You know, there's no reason to build sidewalks or trails or anything if we're not going to have users that get on that facility. So a lot of people would ask, what is the demand? To me, it's where you're having parking competing with walking. When you've got people with baby strollers or they're having to walk out in the road, be it in a wheelchair or be it able-bodied, because they don't have a good walking corridor, that's where the demand is needed. So we got them to get out in the community and explore all 14 of these sites. And at the end, they made recommendations. The recommendations are very close to what we think internal Public Works where we should move forward, and, and I'll show that on the next slide. So this was the six projects that were turned over by priority of what they felt like needed to be done, and I will say that I concur with their findings, very similar to what we had inside Public Works as where our demands are. First project's University Parks at La Salle Intersection. That's a project we've been talking to Baylor University since 2017 about getting people from the apartments on one side of La Salle Avenue over to Farrell Center. People are just having to scramble across that intersection, so we think that's a great project. Austin Avenue, that's from City Hall to Ninth, and that's really one that we'll be looking at more of how do we correct the ADA issues that we have, and I'll get into that a little bit more. Eleventh Street, that's from Franklin Avenue over to the southbound frontage roads of the newly completed I-35 section. Clay Avenue from Second Street to Eighth. Dallas Avenue from Elm Avenue to Mill Street, and then back to Austin Avenue for more of the uptown section from Ninth to Eighteenth Street. So that's the top six that was ranked by the study. Getting into each of those, this is a La Salle Avenue intersection. You can see there's very limited sidewalk available. One thing about this particular project is during the time that we had the study going on, is TechDOT has a project FM 434, which in our world, it's, it's University Parks Drive, that they're going to be bidding, that goes from La Salle over to Loop 340. They're going to bid that in May. It's a reconstruction project. So we were able to take our work that we had identified at this intersection and move it into their project. So we'll be bidding our project, designed by our traffic division, inside Public Works and include it into TechDOT work and be able to capture economy of size along with a project that we've been long waiting. Related to the call itself, when we talk about network enhancements, this is a downtown ADA improvement. These are photos from in and around Austin Avenue, but it expands way beyond that. What we want to do is try to correct those most critical issues with ADA work. Lot of it is trip hazard related, and definitely we need, we got some cleanup work that we need to do. Some of that's been attacked by our internal operations group out in streets, but I think the need is more than we have staffing to take care of in the expeditious manner that you want. One thing about network enhancements is they want you to get that project done upon award within 12 months. So I think that's a perfect avenue for us to do 1.5 million dollars worth of ADA improvements in the downtown area. Ranked three is the downtown neighborhood Eleventh Street. Again, that goes from Franklin Avenue over to I-35 Southbound Frontage Road. The cost on that is about 2.8 million dollars. These are a few photos of what you would experience out there today. Ranked four is Clay Avenue. We believe Clay Avenue probably needs to be tabled during this call, and the reason being is there's so much work related to Clay Avenue limits that we're talking about, related to University Parks Drive and the redevelopment there and all the work that's going on along the riverfront. We wouldn't want to come in and do work that would contradict what the end goal would be with that, all those improvements. And then ranked five is Carver Neighborhood, Dallas Street Bike and Pedestrian Project. Again, that runs from Elm, and some people may not know where Mill Street is, but that's just adjacent to Waco Drive, so it'd be basically going from Elm to Waco Drive. And this is kind of some shots of the current condition. Most of the time when you get out there, you see citizens walking in the street versus walking on what's left of sidewalk that's probably more than 50 years old. Ranked six is the revitalization of Austin Avenue Uptown. It's a pedestrian connection. It does not include bike components at this time. It is a large-scale project. We believe just the pedestrian elements for alternative transportation are going to run you about $6 million. But again, that's $6 million of federal funding that we're going to be asking for, not $6 million internal. We do hope that if we get awarded that project, that we could move forward with the street and utility improvements that would complement all the work that we're planning on doing. All these projects are taking a complete street concept approach. When you think of what we've done over on Webster with the section from Eighth to Eleventh, it kind of had that compliment. It had the tree plantings. You would have developing a light standard for those corridors. It'd be including signal enhancements. We've actually run the numbers on each of these locations, and it's about $500,000 worth of signal enhancements included in the money that we would be doing, and that includes pedestrian push buttons and things to that effect. And then last piece of this is that all the, the locations that we've identified have some level of trap, of transit. When you talk about Waco transit and how important it is to alternative transportation, every one of these corridors have some level, either it's across like an Austin Avenue or it's a direct corridor like Dallas Street. So all these components are included in all the projects that you see as the top six. And that kind of concludes our recommendations. I know we went through that really quick, and again, it's, it's upon us, and if you have any questions, we'd definitely like to answer those questions today.
Question, Mayor. Could you please go back to the Clay Avenue and ask me why you are, I mean, answer, answer my question as to why that was dropped?
So with the University Parks Drive, that's where the tie-in would be, there at Second and University Parks. Right now, what you'd be doing is filling in gaps. We are doing a downtown master plan that I believe will really complement and tell us exactly what this corridor needs to look like as it ties into University Parks and as it ties into the Brazos Riverfront. When I say it's tabled, it's just tabled for this call, but it'll be something we'll continue to work on, and Public Works thinks it's a very important corridor. And we also have other means to fund some of this gap fill-in that it may need as we get that downtown master plan study delivered to us by Kim Lee Horn. I think that's a really big catalyst for all these projects to make sure that we don't contradict what a master plan may be indicating these corridors could look like, feel like, and be useful.
I don't think that really answered my question.
I think, I think it, I think there's a real good opportunity here for us to continue to keep this in the queue, but I understand, I think what Mr. Reed's saying is that as they're still evaluating the work that's underway at University Parks, it might not be the time for this.
No, but that's, it, this is Clay. So Clay Street running into University Parks, that's what you're saying, we're not, we're not going to be looking at right now?
There are some, yes, ma'am, sorry to interrupt you. There, there are some decisions that need to be made as how, how much of Clay may be closed as part of University Parks.
Closed.
How Clay will tie into University Parks or potentially tie into Third, and how Clay will work as it extends into the riverfront. There, there's still, I would say, I wouldn't call them challenges, but I would say there's some decisions that need to be made that make sure that when we spend that dollar, that we're spending it where we're not building something and then having to back up, or we're not designing something and having to back completely up because it doesn't fit well.
That is about as clear answer as I want to get right now because I'm, I'm still not understanding.
Well, maybe, maybe after this, we can circle up and find a time to look through and, and, and get better clarity on when this, if we're not, if we're pausing on this for now, when it'll be back in the queue and, and what that timeline looks like.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Jimmy, thanks so much for this presentation. It's exciting to see us be really competitive for some of these state and federal dollars. I think all of us consistently hear that sidewalks are such a need in our community, whether you want to walk to work to get your steps in, or you need to walk to work because your car is in the shop, or you have some sort of a mobility disability. I'm really grateful to see us hitting this from a lot of different angles, and I think this list is an exciting list. I was driving downtown the other day, and I was watching a gentleman with a walker try to walk alongside Waco Drive on a portion that hasn't gotten sidewalks, and try to walk alongside Waco Drive on a portion that hasn't gotten sidewalks, and just thinking the challenges of, I was mapping out in my head, okay, he's going to come to this intersection, and there will be some sidewalks, and then there won't be sidewalks here, and how challenging that makes it to get from point A to point B. So this feels really exciting, and these are huge projects in terms of dollars. So for us to leverage some of the state dollars feels like an incredible win. So thanks for your thoughtful, strategic work in presenting this and trying to get these dollars into the community.
Yeah, I, I agree with all of that. I think that sidewalks are very important, especially, I appreciate that y'all have narrowed it, focused in here on the areas that pedestrians currently utilize. I think that's important, and that will demonstrate to TechDOT the, the need for this. I, I can, like all of us, I could probably vouch for seeing pedestrians on these streets and seeing how inconsistent the sidewalks are. It's funny to think that Austin's a big project because I think of that as a pretty well-sidewalked street of our community, but you know, just looking at the pictures and thinking through block by block, there's great need for renovation and, and, and kind of consistency throughout the street. And you know, maybe one day, while it's not my district, I'd love to see the 18th to 30th stretch of Austin also, which is a pretty well-trafficked area of District Four, added to that queue down, down the line. But I think these are a great start and well-deserving in the application. So thanks for your good work on kind of finding a way to prioritize these and, and obtain this money that's out there. Thank you.
Yeah, Jim, thanks for the presentation. And Amy, I appreciate you too. You were very active in the, in the MPO and appreciate all your feedback in that, in that forum. And this kind of fits, obviously, through the, what we're trying to do at Metropolitan Planning Organization too. Four good projects related to pedestrian sidewalk biking. Just to echo my fellow council members, I think if these are what we have to narrow it down to, these kind of make sense. Now, the, the funding, we are, the city of Waco would be a 20% match, is that right on these, or is this what kind of match?
Yes, sir. And if you're a smaller community, 5,000 and below, they're actually funding design work and construction inspection and construction administration. For us, we would have to carry that, that cost also. So it'd be a 20% match on the construction dollars, but then we would also have to come up with the design cost, and we'd also have to come up with construction administration and observation.
Okay. And I, I just want to make sure, because I'm always, you know, these are, anytime you see the funding, this is great, millions of dollars, but we have to come up with our money too, so I want to make sure that we're thoughtful on that. And these are projects that we already had kind of on the drawing board, and we're just, you know, and I'm sure that's the case. But I always get a little hesitant when I see the, oh yeah, plus you have the match. You got this coupon for 80%, but you have to come up with, with 20% yourself.
And do you accept competitors coupons, you know?
Exactly. I just want to make sure it's something that we want and need, and obviously, these four, you've demonstrated that these are definitely high-priority items, so I appreciate the work. Good luck.
Hi, Jim. Hi, Amy. Thank you for your presentation. With this, because I know that, you know, a lot of the projects that have happened in the past couple of years, you know, are, which, you know, our community and our citizens are very grateful for, were geared to kind of level the playing field and, and, and bring more equity regarding sidewalks, regarding, you know, ramps and things within our community that have been underserved. With these projects, should we be awarded them? Like, how does that, where does that put us on a scale as far as, you know, because I know that streets has an overall plan, you know, and a benchmark of what, you know, a safe, sound community for pedestrians, for bikers, or cyclists rather, look like, you know? And, and we're adding sidewalks to that conversation. What does this addition do to our, you know, for, in our equity meter? You know, where are we, how, how much are we ticking up?
I think Councilwoman will really have to look at which projects TechDOT ultimately decides to fund, and when they do that, we'll have to come back to you, you know, for your approval for us to move forward with the project after we get notified. And then we'll have to sort of rebalance the playing field based on what we do get funding for, and then balance out additional projects with in-house funding or other means to make sure that we're fair across the board.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm really excited about this. Thank you for this presentation, and there's no doubt this investment is just so needed in this moment. You look at these, these photos, and in my mind, all of these projects are deserving of, of the funding, so I hope we get, get a lot of it. I, I agree with what's been said in terms of how important sidewalks are, not only from a walkability perspective, but, and most importantly, from a walkability perspective, but it also signals something, I think, in terms of the vitality of parts of a city. It connotates a safety component, not only from a walkability perspective, but seeing capital investment in an area, I think helps the small businesses around there and the families that live in those communities as well. I'm really excited about, as has been mentioned, leveraging other dollars. So the one note I had is that my hope is that our goals shouldn't only be utility for these projects, but also aesthetic. So my hope is that as we look at these projects and partner with TechDOT on these and, and figure out our design work, I don't want to just get the job done. I want to make sure that, or get the job done at minimum standards rather, but also make sure that it looks really good and there's high-quality design, quality, attractive materials used where possible, landscaping. And, and so I think that that's deserving. We're going to be putting this level of investment in there. If we can just take it a little, make sure that it's not just utilitarian, but also there is some component of aesthetic. And definitely want to be budget-conscious, and if it doesn't make sense for us to, you know, make it the nicest sidewalk in the history of sidewalks, I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, but where we can ensure that we're being thoughtful about aesthetic, I think we should. So appreciate this presentation, and are really excited to bring every single one of these home with a grant.
And I, I failed to say thank you. Thank you for your work, even though I did question about Clay, but I appreciate the other projects that you have on here, and I know that I forgot to say that, but thank you for that, for that, for this report, and I'm not going to say anything else.
All right. Our next work session, I believe our Finance Director Nick Sarpy is going to join us here at the table for a review of our fourth quarter financial report and Public Funds Investment Act quarterly report. Nick, we are running ahead of time. I apologize. You're going to get more questions. No, seriously, we, Nick's joining us. Overall, I feel really good about where we ended the year. These are, of course, Nick's going to show you unaudited financial figures, but I do, am proud of the work the team has done to manage the challenge that was set out before us in this past fiscal year. You can see some evidence of a, of a trend that I'm going to highlight, and Nick will probably highlight as well, I believe. It's really apparent that we've been doing quite a lot to retain our workforce as well as recruit new workers into the city, and you're seeing that in some of our funds. Our personnel costs are running much closer to budget than they have in years past. Is that something that's been under pressure in the fiscal year we just ended, and I suspect will remain under pressure in 2023 due to the very tight labor market and continuing inflation? So without stealing any more Nick's thunder, I'm going to let him speak and tell us all the good things that are included in the report.
I'm really enjoying that bottom picture of those young ladies with their costumes. I, I really like that picture.
That is cool.
I will let Roque know. He's the one that comes up with these covers. All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So as Bradley mentioned, here to go over the fourth quarter financial report. I want to stress that these are unaudited financial numbers. We should have financial, the financial statements done hopefully by the end of the calendar year and present them to you in early 2023. All the non-financial data is the most current. The comparisons are for fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '21, which is prior year. One of the things we wanted to highlight as part of the report was the work that the Cottonwood Creek Golf Course team did this year in generating $255,000 in excess revenue over expenses without any general fund support. And this was the first year without any general fund support, and so they did really well this year.
Nick, can I hop in here for a second? I know you're going to cover this on a slide later too, but I think it's a great time for me to interrupt you, because you've only been talking like 35 seconds. Now, we actually have Kenny Duran from the golf courses here today. I don't know if every council member has met Kenny, but serves really diligently over at Cottonwood Creek and does a, really an amazing job, him and his team, running a really nice public golf course. And so Kenny's our golf course general manager. Kenny, will you, I know you hate the limelight, but will you stand up and say hi?
He's done a great job at the golf course. I remember when he first took it over, and Kenny just turned this golf course around. It's really a, a jewel in, in our crown of the city of Waco. Thank you, Kenny, for all your, your staff and the hard work that you do out there.
They've done an amazing job this year. Well, they were blessed with some great weather, for golf, anyway. It was hot, but golfers don't mind that, and just really pleased with the, the financial performance. So when I saw the numbers come in, I thought it'd be nice for the council to, A, if you haven't met Kenny, see him, know who's, who's providing that jewel in the crown and working to polish it, but also recognize the great work that the golf course is doing.
All right. So investment report highlights. And so our total investment portfolio for this period quarter decreased by 23.9 million compared to the prior quarter. Our quarterly yield was about 1.68%, which compares to TechBowl, which is just a benchmark, yield of 2.41%. Given the interest rates and when we invest funds, this isn't unexpected, since TechBowl is similar to a money market account, so it adjusts pretty quickly, whereas our investments are three, six, nine months, 12 months, year, two years when we purchase them. And so as interest rates rise, you're going to see this spread. Conversely, if interest rates go down, you'd see the same thing occur. Our year's maturity decreased slightly to 0.59 years compared to 0.65 years at the end of the prior quarter, and this is something that we've been strategically doing as investments have matured. Basically, when the, whoever we purchase investment from pays us our principal for the investment as interest rates in this environment, that it's better to be short than it is to be long. Our investment earnings prior to our mark-to-market, which is unrealized loss, which I'll talk about shortly, was $2.2 million. And for that year, our unrealized loss, which has resulted from the changes in interest rate over the course of really the last nine months or so, was $11 million for the year. This is really unrealized. It's not something that we actually would take a loss on because we hold our investments until they mature, but we are required by accounting standards to report them at whatever you can sell them in the open market. All right. So getting into the fund highlights, so the general fund did really well. Revenues came in at 107.9% of budget, which is $14.4 million more than we budgeted, primarily driven by the increases in property taxes and sales tax this year compared to last year. And then expenses were about 98, 99% of budget. And as Bradley mentioned, part of that is salaries and benefits, primarily salaries and wages because of the changes we've done to employee conversations, the market, new hires are demanding higher wages than what people who left previously were demanding. So the water fund also did really well. The drier weather definitely helps, and so the revenues exceeded budget, but the team at Water does a really good job across the board and through all their funds of managing expenses to revenues every year. So this is my slide. So I thought it was kind of interesting, just looking at rainfall information and looking at since 1902, our fiscal year 1902. And so this shows the, the five-year trend of rainfall and shows that fiscal year '22 was lower than any of the five years in the graph. But since 1902, there have been 12 fiscal years with rainfall less than 20 inches, and only once, in 1917, 1918, did rain less than 20 inches in consecutive years. On average, after a dry year, it's actually a wet year, and so it comes in around a little over 41 inches, which is above the average of 33 inches since 1902.
This is your hopeful slide?
We needed this.
My hopeful slide, as one of my team members says, I'm trying to play God, but no, I just thought it was really interesting when you look at it over, over 100 years and the trend that occurred.
Also getting a sense of what it might have been like on the 1917, 1918 City Council if you're dealing with a World War, a pandemic, and a drought. It's kind of coming into focus, so there might be some kinship there.
Just, just to clear the record, 1917 and 1918, so a bit, bit, bit before my.
I wasn't asking, I wasn't asking.
All right. So wastewater fund has continued to do really well this year. They did well last year as well and exceed budget. And again, as I mentioned earlier, Water does a really good job of managing the revenues to expenses each year and ensuring that they're staying within their budget for, on the expense And really, the revenues, as I mentioned, drier weather plays a part in the wastewater as well, because in the wintertime, we water more into that, results in larger charges throughout the rest of the year. Expenses were higher because of capital and billings from other departments. So WMARS is an interesting situation. It does worse when it's drier as opposed to when it's wet, and so revenues were down, were less than budget, but again, the team managed the expenses fairly well this year because of the drier weather. So the solid waste team did exceptionally well this year. They came in with revenues that were 121% of budget, both from a residential, commercial, and landfill operations side, and they, their expenses exceed budget slightly, but were far less than their revenues. The airport fund saw revenues come in higher than budget, and a lot of this has to do with their grants, the CARES Act grants that they have, being, doing really well with those and managing those. And so it's basically allowed us to take our charges for service and the revenue that we generate out the airport and kind of bank those because we've been matching our operational expenses with our grant funds. So conventions, Hotel Motel Tax did really well this year.
Is there a way, real quick, sorry to break, is there a way to maybe move the Zoom screen down? It's covering some, I guess I'm reading off the screen, but it's kind of covering some of the data as it pops up. Thanks so much, appreciate that.
You mean you don't want my face with the data?
Well, I prefer your face, but it'd be the entire screen if it was much worse.
So hotel revenue has done really well, this, Hotel Motel Tax revenue has done really well, which in turn has resulted in the convention fund doing really well this year, even with increases for transfers out related to the Mobile Welcome Center, the tourist information relocation, and then the carpet project, which we'll talk about more next week. TechStranger Hall of Fame, they did fairly well this year. Their revenues came in above budget, and their expenses were under budget this year. And the attendance trend is looking positive, and hopefully, as I-35 construction finishes up, we'll continue to see an upward trend in attendance. So the zoo did pretty well. They matched budget, so kudos to them and the budget team for the numbers for the budget. And then they managed their expenses, and they kept them underneath budget. And one of the things we'll point out is this year, we strategically drew into their reserves for the zoo. Part of it had to do with. Part of it had to do with capital. So there's the aviation net that they're still working on processing and installing and acquiring. But also because the general fund has transferred the money in. And so we strategically chose to draw down the fund balance, because it'd been growing over the last couple of years because of the operations that they had, especially last year, where they far exceeded our expectations. As mentioned earlier, Cottonwood did really well this year with no general fund transfer. The transfer that you see in there is actually just a return of funds from our risk management fund because of excess fund balance in the risk management fund. Their revenues exceeded expenses by over $255,000, which, you know, there's not a lot more I can say about that. But their revenues per attendee, and they're the only fund, our enterprise fund, where, aside from the utilities, where they generated positive net income.
Hey, Nick, back on the golf course, is that, what are we measuring here? Is that rounds of golf played? I don't see the.
Yes, that's rounds.
Rounds, okay.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember the number. It was above 45,000 total rounds for the year, wasn't it? 46, maybe? Yeah, that's, that's an amazing. It was right about 45, a little over 45,000. I think is the exact phrasing. Not as good a draw as Kenny, but, but you asked for it. But that's a lot, that's a really positive amount of play on a public course, so, well done.
All right, the drainage utility. So this is the first year of operations. So comparative information isn't really available. There's minimal comparative information as we started operations in '21, but '22 is really the first full year of operations for the drainage utility. The one thing that you will see is that we're not quite billing to where we said we would in our, the study that created the utility, but we're working through those efforts to get those. And that was some of the changes that you did to the ordinance as we are approving the fiscal year '23 budget. All right, the last fund, so Waco Transit. So Waco Transit's mostly funded by grants, and they do a really good job of making sure their revenues and expenses come pretty closely in line, which you see here. Revenues are slightly above expenses. And so they do a really good job of managing all that operations out there. So for, in summary, so for fiscal year '22, we continued to have a conservative budget, a little bit more optimistic than '21's, just because we knew we were coming out of the pandemic and the recovery process had started. And so we're starting to see operations return to what you call the new normal, but really looks very similar to the old normal. And we continue to see strong sales in hotel motel tax revenues throughout the entire fiscal year, and hopefully those will continue through '23. But most departments and funds did a good job of managing their budgets and to stay in line with their budgets and exceed on the top end line, which is revenues. All right, any other questions?
I'm going to erase Holmes, because I know that he has the most questions of all of us.
And Brad said I could take all the time I wanted.
Yeah, so, so before Holmes' TED Talk on finances. Nick, thanks so much for your presentation. I really appreciate the way that you use graphs and charts and icons in a way that is compelling and interesting and shares such a clear story of where we've been and where we are to date. One of the things that comes to mind in looking through all of this is just how incredibly resilient we are as a city. Seeing 2020 on all of those graphs is so stark. And I think we've all just been, you know, nose to the grindstone the last couple of years, trying to help our community survive this global health pandemic and the economic recession that came with it. And to see how healthy we are fiscally as a community is just incredible. So for all the incredible city staffers in the room, thank you for the hard work that is so reflected in these documents. It is incredibly clear that we have really thoughtful people leading at every level of the organization that we can have numbers that look like this at this point in the year. The other thought that I have in looking through all of this is what an incredible space that we're in, that where we're closest to our budget is people. Us investing in our hard-working city employees by raising our minimum wage, by creating new leave policies, by increasing the benefits, that demonstrates to our constituents and to our staff that we really care about who's in each of these seats. And we want to make sure that our employees are financially secure and healthy and are excited to come to work every day to make our city better. So even though we're feeling that tension, I just want to wave the little green flag that this is a really good thing for us to be feeling tension in. And it shows that we're really prioritizing our staff as one of the top priorities. And I think that's exciting, and I think that's something that we can all be really proud of. So thanks for this presentation, Nick. I just feel inspired knowing where we've been and where we're going and seeing the health of some of these funds feels really hopeful.
Holmes over here, okay, I'm going to just ask a couple of questions here. First of all, yeah, the numbers for 2022 fiscal year end, which ours is October to September. The year is over, we had a pretty good, pretty good year. And these numbers preliminary are coming in very, very good. The way I look at this is there's really kind of, you go over 12 funds. And I like the way you kind of summarize it, like the general fund, there's five utility funds, five venue funds, and then the Waco Transit fund. So there's 12 that we kind of focus on here. I mean, I like to try to get, identify the universe. Within the general fund, just the one thing that popped out at me was just the, the sales tax coming in there at 53, which is great. I mean, I think that as long as, when we can start depending on that, and I know it's hard because there's micro forces and macro forces with, micro with how our tourism is doing, macro forces with what is, you know, are people, are people still coming to Waco? Are we selling Waco well enough? And what happens in an inflation environment? So there's things that still make that sales tax number hard to predict. And I appreciate staff's efforts in how to predict what that number's going to do. But it came in very strong this year, and that's, that helps all, everybody in Waco, because that's mostly out-of-town people, or a lot of it is out-of-town people buying product here. In the utility funds, what jumped out at me, water, wastewater, WMARS, solid waste, and drainage, was that we hit the budget targets this year very, very close. And what, the big challenge was the rising costs of, of supplies and third-party services, which is inflation-driven and the supply chain-driven. And so those costs went up just across the board, 18% in water, 6% in wastewater, 8% WMARS, and 11%, 11% in solid waste. So that challenge and still coming out ahead of, on all these statements is a tribute to, to staff management, and I appreciate that. On the venue funds, convention, ranger, museum, zoo, Cottonwood, and airport, yeah, I like how you put, and Kelly kind of touched on it, the KPI, the key performing, performer indicators, key performance indicators on your little presentation, where you're showing us what the hot tax was, the primary revenue generator in, on the convention. On the ranger and the zoo, you're showing us what the attendance is. That was always kind of blurry to us before. In golf, you're showing the rounds. And in the airport, you're showing us arrivals and departures, which helps give us a better idea of what, you know, what's happening with the core data here. And then the fees and the, and the expenses and the, and the revenues around that give us a better idea of what's going on. So I like how you're kind of setting up the, setting up the presentation. And again, these venue funds, 2022 is showing pretty nice recovery from the pandemic, too, just people, people getting out. And, and I had pointed, and my own notes have a lot of stars, exclamation points around Kenny, what you're doing at Cottonwood, because it's not very often where we have these venues pay for themselves and actually draw, draw a profit like, like what you're, and again, it was very, it's very tight. We're not supposed to have a lot of profit in there, but it shows a good management through the pandemic and just almost total recovery from, back to your pre-pandemic numbers. So congratulations to you. The, again, this is my last comment on the KPIs. Very good work, Nick, nice presentation. One, one thing that, that, again, we talked about this at budget audit, was how each of these funds, each of these 12 major funds is tied to a cash balance on the, on the balance sheet of unassigned cash balances, assigned cash balances. And if we could somehow in the future, I don't know, make it a quarterly basis, look and see what, what those funds are. Maybe we could just do that at B and A. And I know that this general fund, with this kind of performance, our general fund, unassigned fund balance, if I'm saying that right, Paul, puts us a little, we targeted 28% on that. And I think this puts us in good stead there, not only for this year, but probably for the next couple of years ahead. And we have to plan ahead for that, too, for, for bonding purposes and pricing, et cetera. So anyway, maybe the next budget audit, we can, we can look at. And I know we had a review, I think, a couple of months ago on cash balances within each one of these funds, more of a balance sheet look, not, not the revenue expense look. But anyway, very good, good report, good-looking report and great numbers. And congratulations to all you assistant city managers back there, and your staffs, and Bradley, great job this year.
I'll just wrap it up by saying that I think that this is the evidence of a diligent staff who works really intentionally to make sure that we're budgeting wisely and thoughtfully and really delivering on that budget. And I'm really, really appreciative with high gratitude to our entire team. So thank you to our staff and excited for the next year that is going to continue to demonstrate good work and a good solid budget.
I just want to say thank you to you as well, Nick. I certainly agree everything my colleagues have said, but more especially what Kelly mentioned and what she, she said. And you always make these reports to where I can understand them. You know, where we're at, where we're going, and where we've been. So I appreciate that. And it's a lot easier for me as a councilperson to see your reports. That way, I, in case my constituents call and say, why did you do this and why? Or where are we going? I can at least fall back on the answers that you have given us. So thank you, thank you, Nick, so much for that.
You're welcome, thank you so much.
I expected more questions, what can I say? Do you want us to replay that last slide? Because I felt like you really wanted some affirmation on that as well.
It's better than the last one, that is good.
I don't know who did that.
The best question slide of the year.
I agree. He's only 31 days into the fiscal year, though, so he's got many more opportunities. All right, our last work session is going to be a review of our planning, public hearing agenda item. Beatrice Wharton's going to come up and review this. Beatrice serves as our planning manager, if you're not familiar with Bee. She'll be covering just one item tonight. I think the last time Clint left, he left you like 25 items. So this one's a little, a little less quantity, so. Beatrice, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Bradley, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me the opportunity again to speak for you tonight. And yes, like Bradley mentioned, only one public hearing item on the agenda this evening for you. A little bit of a break from planning items. I know that you have a lot on your mind and certainly appreciate all of the work that you do. So this public hearing is for the subdivision plat, final plat and construction plans of the Park Meadows South Edition Phase III. This is at the northeast corner of Warren Road and Farm Miller, currently within our ETJ. It's a 301 lot phase of this subdivision. The preliminary plat was previously approved with a condition for required plants of middle for Farm Miller Road. And so just a little bit of history on this, as you've seen several times. On August 23rd, the Plan Commission recommended approval with conditions of this phase. Resubmittal was received on August 26th. And due to the House Bill 3167, which requires us to respond to their response within 15 days, we weren't able to have a Plan Commission meeting within that 15-day timeframe. And so it was brought to council on October 4th, and council approved five to zero with the condition that the upgrade in accordance with the approved preliminary plat be met. And that's highlighted in Note 12 of the preliminary plat that was previously approved a few years ago. And so we did receive a resubmittal on October 19th. And again, because of that timeframe that we have, are tied to because of state law, it's been brought to you, and staff does recommend approval of the plat and construction plans because they have met that condition. And so staff is recommending approval with no conditions.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
All right, are there any requests for future agenda items? If not, we will recess the work session and reconvene regular session.
May?
Yes.
I, I don't have a request for agenda item, but I, I mentioned that I'm away at a conference, and I won't be able to attend the business session. But, you know, I did want to address Councilmember Palmer if I could. Is this the time to do that?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I was like, if you're shaking your head, I can't see you. I'm a visual person, so can take, take the screen down so I can see her? Thank you. I think, I mean, I can't talk to her in her face, but at least I could see what you, you know.
Andre, I don't know where to look, but I'm looking at the screen at least.
I know, right? So what I would just briefly say is that, you know, we have appreciated your passion, your energy, your curiosity, your challenge to the concerns of your constituents, to the concerns of the city, and taking them full force during your tenure on this council. I think that that is an asset for you. And I am excited about your new chapter, and I'm excited about your new season. And, you know, we appreciate the impact that you've made on this council. We appreciate the impact that you've made on the city and especially your district. So blessings to you as you move forward in your new season.
Thank you, councilmember. We, there's no executive session tonight, so we will re, we will recess the work session and reconvene regular session, but only for recess until the business session at 6:00 PM. Thank you.